Run again next year, don't you? It's not fun. I mean, I don't think it is.
Other kids may totally enjoy it.
You're right, it's not.
But I don't think so. I applied for one of the policy committees for LOC. And I got noticed today that I've been selected on the community development, you know, which includes a lot of different kinds of things, including parks and recreation and some economic development stuff and one thing and another. So I'm excited. Yeah, I love the opportunity to serve like that.
Do they meet in Salem?
They, some of the meetings, they expect to be conference calls. But otherwise, yes, they meet in Salem.
I've never been to their places down there. Have you ever been?
I never have, but I want to be sure and get down there because their new executive director is a friend of mine from the chamber world, Mike Cully. He used to run a San Diego, well, he ran a couple of chambers and then the San Diego, it's kind of like a chamber, but it's the economic development and community development. So Mike got in touch with me a while back and said, hey, guess what? You know, I'm a finalist and, you know, I'm not going to ask you for anything, but, you know, maybe. And then he sent me back later and said, I'm your new exec. I was so excited. Yeah. So, so I know I'll get down there. Probably they'll have a reception or something for my.
Ready? All right. All right. I hereby call the 2,260th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award for December of 2017 presented to Odalis Aguilar Aguilar. And Principal Pender.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Good evening. I bring senior Odalis Aguilar Aguilar, who has transferred to us after her freshman year. She lived in David Douglas area and then came to Milwaukee, which we were fortunate to be able to have her at our school. During that first year, she made an impact right away as she was in her pre-AP biology class. And then she would go and help her science teacher out with her. She taught a sheltered science class also, and these were all to newcomers. She's developed her own tutoring program for them and made sure these kids would be able to get the science in their native languages. So she was able to do that for them. 3.7 GPA, has five AP courses. You have, I think, a two-page list of all her accomplishments. She just showed me one more she just received from the Western Oregon University, the Caesar Chavez Conference. She's been selected as one of the Clackamas County student leaders. So she represents all the schools in Clackamas County at this conference as being one of the student leaders in this coming March, I believe it is. So it's quite a conference. In fact, I was able to secure double the number of seats for students from Milwaukee to attend this every year. It's a leadership for Latino students to get a great college experience on being leaders. So Odalis is now going to be a leader of that. She is involved in student government. She's involved in all sorts of other things that you can ask her about. Just have Odalis tell you about what her future plans are.
Okay, good afternoon. So my plan kind of changed a little bit throughout time, throughout my high school career. First off, I wanted to start in going pre-med and I wanted to be an anesthesiologist. But now, within like the last two years or so, I've changed more to pre-law. I don't know exactly what I want to major in yet. I know I can do political science or English or history. But I know that I do want to major in Spanish since I already have like 40-something Spanish credits that I can take at the high school, which is really good. And I also want to major in Chicano Latin Studies. I really like to learn about my culture. And I know that throughout the years in the history classes, my culture was never taught. So I want to learn more about it. And I learned a lot from my parents, but there's some things, you know, that I also want to learn more about. And that's what I want to do. I want to be an activist. I want to be, I want to advocate for my Latino community because it's really important to me. And I want, I know that I can't end all stereotypes, but I know that I can change the way people see me and just, you know, just make it not so negative. But I do want to represent my community in a positive way. And I want it to be known. And I'm kind of doing that now.
Yes, you are. And she's got, you know, a number of schools she's applying to right now. So it's just in that process right now, which one she wants to, or which one wants her, or which one's probably give her the most money.
I was just saying, lots of them will want hers. It's the financing.
The bidding.
Great. Well, thank you. Who wants to start?
Go ahead. Well, first of all, I'd say that with our current presidential administration, we need all the advocates that we can get. And so I'm very heartened to hear you say that this is important to you and that you're going to go out and be a voice. Just looking over your resume, I know that you're a voice because you've been involved in so many things, which is wonderful. I was going to ask you, what is, I'm not familiar with the suit. You say you're an ambassador with Student Voice. What's that?
So Student Voice is a nonprofit organization that they have, I think there's like 10 of us throughout the nation. And a lot of us in our states, we promote and try to fight for more equitable schools. There's only like two or three of us on East Coast? No, West Coast, West Coast. There's a lot more on East Coast. Sorry. And they, it's an organization and we try to, I don't know how to explain it. Well, okay, we have monthly tasks. And those monthly tasks, right now, we're working on mental health. And we want to create, kind of like this, more like a discussion where students can talk about mental health because it is a big issue. And every month, there's different issues. And every month, students that are ambassadors write op-eds in Medium. I don't know if you guys have heard about that. And each month, there's a new one that comes out in a different topic. So what we do is we take a group of students, what we're going to do for the mental health, and they'll have a discussion. And then with that, we'll report back to the directors. And with that, they create those op-eds and create mental awareness for more equitable schools. They did one a month or two months ago. And then there's just, there's many topics that we hit. But we want to get students' voices because we are the next generation of leaders. So we want to have as much openness as we can with the students so that, you know, older generations can read that and just reflect on it and see. Because I know that a lot of us, we don't want to say things because there's adults in the room. But, and I know that adults sometimes are like, oh, that, you know, that's not a problem right now, or that's not something that should be addressed right now. But it is, you know. And sometimes students can't be right. And sometimes younger generations do want to have that voice. And that's what we promote.
Fantastic. Thank you for your service to Milwaukee and the stuff that you've done, and also to your peers at school. And congratulations on all the wonderful things that are happening.
Thank you.
You are one very busy young lady. It's amazing to see everything from helping out as a camp counselor to, you know, developing the systems that you have to, you know, work with your peers and to educate other students and to educate the community at large. Very impressive, you know, and very important for people to know that you served on the Milwaukee Board, our visioning process. Can you talk about that a little bit? Kind of what, what did you gain from that?
I did that junior year, I think. It was last year. And it was really eye-opening. We went canvassed a lot of places. We had a lot of community conversations with Daniel and David and Anaiz. And it was, it was really eye-opening to see how underrepresented the Latinos were at Milwaukee. Because out of all the canvassing, I think we only had one community conversation at Wichita Center. And it had like five Latino, you know, families. So I was like, wow, well, they're going to make a big change in the city. And we were not listening to their voices, you know. I was surprised of, you know, how, how few number of people attended. And I thought that, you know, why, why don't we speak up? Why? Because it's our community. We live in it. We all live in it. And we all want it, you know, to be better. And we all want to have the best. But I was, I was surprised, you know, how few representatives I got. But it was good to hear their voices and it was good to hear everyone else's voices. I hope that, you know, our work helped you guys somewhat. And it was a really, really, really great experience. And I'm so thankful to have that because it was, it was amazing just getting out there and talking to everyone in the community.
Well, thanks for that service and for all the other things you do. And I see that you've been an employee of a couple of businesses for some time. So you're kind of learning a number of aspects of daily life of what happens when you become an actual adult. And, you know, you can be a business advocate as well as, you know, advocate for community growth and those other kinds of things. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank you very much for your service on the Visioning Advisory Committee because it, we, I feel like we, we learned a lot. And I hope that as you go off into college and you, and maybe return to this community, and even now, you're not gone yet, I think we have a lot more to learn from you. And I hope that you will, you will help us improve. Because I agree with you that there were, there were, there were some gaps. And, and as a city, we can always improve on outreach. And specifically to, you know, some of the communities who, who are underrepresented here, often in City Hall, and engaged in our community events. So thank you so much for that work that you did. And, and I hope that you'll come back and help us improve on that even more. And I loved, I really enjoyed watching the video from your sophomore year. And I'm always most impressed by the students who find, find a problem or come across a problem and help to find a solution. And so thank you very much for the work that you do among your peers because I think you probably engage with them in a way that the teachers simply can't, can't reach. And so I think that that's probably a very important, an important job that you, or a role that you fill. And I'm sure that your fellow students appreciate the hard work that you do in that regard. And I do too. So thank you very much. And congratulations. And I wish you all the best luck. And please come visit us.
Thank you.
Well, I just second what everybody said about how impressive your, your record is and all the diverse things that you've done and, and hardworking. I mean, doing multiple, multiple of them at the same time. On the visioning thing, I would say if you have thoughts in the next, while you're still here, before you go off to college or wherever, about how we better reach that community, you know. I think we'd all, we'd love to have, you know, email from you or have you come, let us know what you think, other methods that could be used. Because I know they tried in the visioning process. But maybe there's something we overlooked in terms of methods to try and reach into, into the Latino community. So Counselor Abma and I are both lawyers. And so I was like, I always like it when somebody wants to be a lawyer. Although I will tell you, I didn't know when I finished high school that I wanted to be a lawyer. But you're right, you can study almost anything and go to law school. Doesn't really matter. You can study Chicano Studies. You can study history. You can study poli sci. I do think the English, I do think writing is, is most important for your legal career. It's probably the most important skill for you to perfect. And so being an English major is a pretty good way to go or, you know, dual major with something else. But, but anyway, I'm sure you'll do great wherever you go. And, and yeah, do come back and let us know how it's going.
Thank you.
I thought you looked familiar when I walked in. And I was like, oh, yeah. So after it was all said and done, what do you, how good did we hit the mark from your perspective with the vision?
I think the vision was, it was pretty well-constructed with the amount of research that we did. Like, you know, Falconer, Falconer said, there were, there were gaps. And we did try, we held that community conversation. So it wasn't really like our fault that they didn't come. But I do think that, I don't know, the amount of outreach you can do because you can only push so hard for someone to give you their voice. I thought the vision statement was very well-written. Like I said, with the amount of research, it was, it was pretty, pretty good. And I know that City, the Town Hall, I think there was two of them, correct? Yeah. I think we had great success in that too. But I also didn't see the Latino community. So I don't know if it was like whether, you know, the, they can read the flyers in English that were only in English or, or they just didn't get them, or I don't know what happened.
There was a table being translated to at one of them.
Yeah, I think there was.
At the second, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had a few, but you're right. It was under.
But there's only so much we can do.
The community was underrepresented for sure. And, and that's why I was sort of curious if we, if we missed something. And, and then maybe the thing to think about is, is not so much how we, in that moment, reach out to a community, but what are we doing wrong? Or what could we be doing differently as a community, as a city council, as a city, to make it feel more welcoming or more safe or more, you know, where they would just automatically come? Because why wouldn't you?
Right. I know that Wichita Center does a lot of, just like, like canned food drive, I think they do, like toy drive and all that stuff. I think that those families would love to give their perspective, you know. I don't know if maybe they can do like a Town Hall there specifically for them. And then we can just translate all that information and, you know, decode it like we did before. And then we can just compile that information, you know, because I'm sure that some of the issues are, you know, that they see are the same issues that the rest of the community saw. But I do think that that would be a good idea. I don't know if you guys are willing to do that. You know, if you need me on board, I'll be on board. You can sign me up. I'll go ahead and do that for you. But that's, that's an idea you could do, where you can do just a Town Hall for them. So that, like you said, so they can feel safe and they can feel welcoming and they feel like their voice is going to be heard.
Well, as you, as you think of more things, be sure to let us know. Activists are some of my favorite people. And activists who are lawyers tend to be very successful at what they do. So good on you. Good choice. I look forward to seeing you in action afterwards.
Thank you.
So the City of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, citizenship, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School. Odalis Aguilar Aguilar. Let it be known to all, on this 19th day of December 2017, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas and the State of Oregon, recognize this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Construction updates.
Please.
Not much has changed from last month. We are in the final phases of the modular city design. We're calling it Mod City for lack of a better name. The, we got a meeting scheduled for January 3rd to really finalize that. They've got the move-in dates, first phase, first week of March, second phase, first week of April. Demolition to start in June. Modulars to be fully ready by the end of August. And, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into that planning. The staff, we have a professional development day on January 2nd. So kids don't go to school that day. And an hour, hour and a half of that time will be having our staff just interact with the models, actually the two-dimensional models of the plan so that we can really start to get it. And we may even take a walk out on the field, see how long it takes to walk from one corner of the field to get to a restroom or something, you know. Just practical things that, you know, you don't know about. And then, then all the other questions those things bring up. But other than that, we're on schedule. And, you know, things are going well.
Cool.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Happy holidays.
Yeah. Merry Christmas.
I have a broken chair too.
This one's, like, it's just, it goes down. Tray key? Mine's a little higher. Actually, I'll take this one next.
Oh, okay.
It's really heavy.
Arms. I have to wrestle with mine all the time.
All right. So next up, we have the Vietnam 50th Commemoration Partnership Recognition. This will be introduced by our city recorder, Scott Stauffer. And he will be joined by the American Legion Post 180 Commander Mike Wilson and American Legion Post 180 Chaplain Jerry Craig. Welcome, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we just want to take a quick moment on the council's busy agenda this evening to mark the end of the three-year partnership with the American Legion. I have a few quick slides to take down memory lane of the last three years real quick. But overall, we just want to say thank you to our partners at the American Legion. It's been a great three years. This was an initiative started, kicked off by a previous council. And we committed through the Department of Defense for a three-year program. The recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War lasts through 2025 at the federal level. But when individual partners sign on, and there are thousands of agencies and stores and governments that have signed on to this across the country, they get, you get a three-year window that you're committing to, to events for. So our three-year window and the Legion's three-year window is ending in, in 2017. But certainly, there's, there's more things we can do. And we are committed still to working with our partners in the community. So I'll just have a few quick slides, Jerry and Mike, if you want to jump in on anything or if anybody remembers anything. But, so it was a proclamation back from 20, must have been the end of 2015. We kicked it off officially. There was planning in the, in the works in 2013, 2014. Former Counselor Miller was pretty involved in instigating it. And some former staff members were also involved in it. So we had a proclamation that Mayor Ferguson read. And then on the right is the proclamation from President Obama, which we've had in the corner of chambers here since that time as well. So the first big thing we did in 2015, we brought a replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall in DC to Milwaukee High School back in July of 2015. And it was a great, long, four-day weekend. Had a parade and we had a number of daily readings of the casualties. We focused on the casualties from our region, the Pacific Northwest. I can't remember the total number of names we read, but it was all 700 of Oregon for sure, and including Washington. And Washington, so, and current members of council. Council President Beatty and Mayor Gamble were involved in reading those names. And, yeah, it was a great, it was a great event. And, oh, and then there was a parade down Main Street. And former City Manager Monahan there too. And then 2016, we, we kind of took a lighter approach to it. But we did do a couple of events still. We, we did an event at the high school where we thanked the high school for their support of that wall event the year before. And following the state's lead, in 2016, we raised the prisoner of war missing in action flag on all city buildings, which we still have flying to this day. And Jerry's been an expert spokesman for us with the press and the media. And then this year, of course, we ended, we ended with a big finale at Scott Park. We installed the monument just a month ago. And it's, we're happy to report it's still standing. And, and it's been received very well.
Are there some concerns about that?
No concern. But it's been a mark of pride. And I've heard anecdotally from people who've stopped by, you know, weeks afterwards, are still going to go see that, that in our park. And so as a segue to where we're going next, there's, there's, has been talk about adding on to that plaza, that Vietnam memorial spot at Scott Park. And of course, there's always Veterans Day and Memorial Day that we'll partner and other programs and things we might look at in the future. So while, while our official participation in the Department of Defense program ends this year, we, we have more things on the horizon to work with our partners. And so, thank you, Mike and Jerry. Do you guys have anything, any direct remark?
I can say after three years is, we've kind of gotten along together. Two new counselors. That title changed soon, but our post and the auxiliary really likes to work with the city about all things. And we've had Veterans Day and Flag Day and POW Day. And we can continue that, plus. kind of want to get on board with us, you set the example. You set the example to the veterans and the veterans' community. Just like the high school, patriotism is something that grows each time you do something with the recognition. And it's not always about the recognition, it's about the people that are involved. And it's been a great team. I personally want to thank you, and I'm sure the Legion officers and everybody else would too.
Thank you.
And thank you.
It's great working with you. Thank you.
As the commander for the Legion post here, Post 180, I want to express my deep appreciation for all that the city has done to help us reach out to the community. Our principal goals are to interact with veterans and also the community. And the city council here has facilitated that, and I, as the commander, I really appreciate that, and my post appreciates that. And we look forward to working with you on future projects to improve and enhance our community, making it a very livable and safe environment for our citizens. So, once again, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, for all the work you've done.
Absolutely.
And we've prepared, I know you guys have copies of this already, but we want to make sure you guys have a good thing to display.
Nice.
Oh, nice.
We framed the poster from our last endeavor together, and we... Cool. All right. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like to also say, again, probably going to be a broken record, but it's not with us. If it wasn't for Scott being on our team and being in the media liaison, there were a lot of things that would have got done either. We deeply appreciate that.
Yeah, Scott's amazing.
With magic.
All right. Next up, we have the Metro Home Share Program that will be introduced by Home Share Program Manager Pauline Berkey.
Some brochures here, and some flyers.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, Scott is handing out some brochures, I'll go ahead and start. I know I don't have a ton of time, so, thank you, guys, for having our program be able to come and present. Metro Home Share is a home sharing program hosted by Ecumenical Ministries of Oregon. We're an expansion of our old shared housing program under the name of Shared Housing. That program ran for 29 years and was responsible for over 5,000 home share matches. It closed down in 2012, so since then, there's been a lot of talk primarily surrounding our housing crisis and needing more resources to kind of combat that. So, we just opened recently in October to clients to begin facilitating home share matches. And what we do is we work with our home providers and home seekers to facilitate a rental agreement between the two. Our home providers usually have an extra room in their homes, they're empty nesters, they, at this point in life, they're either living alone, or they have a lot of space. And they need support with things like either financial support, or support with tasks around the home, like grocery shopping or pet care. And so, we find people who have been priced out of the rental market, or are facing housing instability, to come together and create a beneficial relationship between the two. So, that's kind of home sharing in a nutshell. How our process works is, you know, our program is designed to be both low barrier but comprehensive. So, we take care of all of the screening. We do background, criminal, and credit checks. And then, we also do intake assessments and home visits with each of our clients. The intake is a great opportunity for us to assess the needs on both sides. So, an example from the last program, we had, you know, a guy who was living in his truck and couldn't find a job, and had to, you know, live in his truck because he couldn't afford housing. So, the last program ended up matching him up with an apartment complex owner who had a unit, and their exchange was the guy would give landscaping services in exchange for his rent. So, he was able to live in his house and do the landscaping for the apartment complex. So, we're looking for things like that. Right now, we're seeing a lot of people who need care around the home, grocery shopping, laundry, handiwork, and then finding people who can provide that. Because we're so new, we're still kind of navigating through where the needs are, because I feel like they've changed a lot in the last five years as the housing crisis has increased. So, sometimes, you know, we'll see, I would say, right now, we're seeing a lot of really opposite needs. They either need a lot of care and no money, or they need a lot of money and no care. And so, we're trying to navigate through that, not only in Multnomah County, but also Clackamas County, and now we have funding in Washington County. So, trying to assess the needs in each area and see how we can fit in. So, a little bit about our clients, you know, they look like a lot of us in this room. They're working professionals, they're retirees, they're single parents, and they're people who've just been priced out of the rental market, so, and we see that on both sides. You know, we don't have a huge number of home providers who are making significantly more than our home seekers. They're all kind of even all the way through. Unfortunately, we're seeing age range go higher. So, we're seeing a lot of home providers and home seekers facing homelessness who are 55 and older. So, our clientele is mostly seniors, and our program is targeted towards serving the senior population. I think that what we've found is our clients really find this as a safer option to Craigslist or Roommates.com, where there's a lot of uncertainty, there is not enough screening, and we walk alongside our clients and also offer two years of case management support once a match is made, just to assess those needs as the home share match continues. Some of the benefits of home sharing is home retention, allowing people who've worked so hard for the homes that they have to keep them and remain in their community. It is a quick option for affordable housing. We're not building anything new, we're not, you know, having long wait lists. It's really based on compatibility. Our clients self-match, though we do all of the legwork beforehand. So, if we have somebody who's looking for a room and can only pay $500, we present options in that kind of category, and depending on where they need to stay demographically or geographically. And then, we also kind of coach them through the interview process. It can feel scary to talk to somebody you don't know and say, hey, let's share a house. So, we kind of coach them through that, and we work with a team of mediators. So, tonight is really important for my program to come and speak here, because we're looking to collaborate with other organizations in other cities to really get the word out that our program is back up and running for those who are familiar with shared housing, as well as those who aren't familiar with shared housing, that this is a possibility. Many of our clients don't know that home sharing can really go a long way. You know, we, it's not just the need of housing. Most people have housing, food, finances, so many other needs, community, relationships. And so, home sharing provides a lot of that, and hits a lot of targets that, you know, regular affordable housing or transitional housing might not hit. So, yeah, it's really important for us to kind of raise awareness in the community, and I really appreciate you guys giving us a few minutes to talk about Metro Home Share.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes.
I love, I love the whole idea. I was so excited to see the info about the program. And in fact, I recommend you stick around, because right after you, Rachel's coming up from Providence Resource Desk, and it seems like you guys might want to connect with each other.
Should know each other.
Yeah. The, so, you said, like, if someone can only pay X, they get, you know, you present them with whatever options you have. I mean, how, how long does it typically take to find a match? I realize there are outliers, but...
Yeah, so, that is a tough question for us, because we just opened in October. So, we're looking at a client pool of less than 100 people at this point. And so, it's going to take, it's taking a little bit longer. We haven't made a match yet since we've opened. Because the clientele pool is so narrow, criteria is going to be really narrow. We are at a point right now where we're finally, we think we might be making a match before the end of the year, which is really exciting. So, that's taken, I would say, four weeks for both clients.
And do you have, I mean, how do you get out to the community? And I guess, how do you, it seems to me that, I noticed on your website that it said, you know, like you were, you didn't, it sounded like you had more home seekers than home offers, providers. How do you find those people? And is there some way to, I mean, we know there are people out there who are having trouble making the mortgage payments, and how do we find those people and let them know about your program?
Yeah, so, I talk a lot everywhere. I'm at community centers, senior centers, churches, you know, meetings like this, to really just get the word out there, and then kind of see how that trickles out. I meet with a lot of case managers and our social services agencies, you know, to find referrals. Having more home seekers than home providers is very true of this kind of work, and it's true across the nation. Of all the development and research we've done, everyone's always doing outreach to home providers. So, I don't really do outreach to home seekers, they find us. The home providers are who we go out there and try to talk to. One thing that we've kind of seen that we need to do in 2018 is convince the unconvinced. You know, I think a lot of home providers say, that's a great idea, but I'm not sharing my home. Though, this is the make or break between them keeping that home or being homeless. And so, kind of coaching them through the fact that we do screening, and it's a very hands-on kind of program. We work with Fair Housing Council, we have a landlord-tenant lawyer, because there's a lot of fear. And there's also a stigma, right? You've worked so hard to have this home, and kind of the American dream has been, you work hard, you have your things, you have ownership over that. And to try to dispel some of that has been a challenge, and I think it's always going to be a challenge.
Well, I think it's great what you're doing, and to the whatever extent we can help, I'm all for trying to help get the word out there.
Yeah, other than promoting, I hope you'll let us know what we can do, and if promoting is all we can do, then we just need to do more of it, because I do think that we probably have quite a few people. I mean, I know that we have very, a lot of severely rent-burdened people, you know, residents here in this community. And I imagine, you know, we've also got some folks who would like to stay in their homes a little bit longer, but, you know, like you say, they, maybe they need a little bit of help with grocery shopping, or just community, and...
Community is a big thing that I've seen. We work with Care Organ, and they kind of have the health perspective on all of this. And in the senior community, depression is at a rate three times higher than the general population, and that's because they don't have anyone to talk to. You know, and so, linking someone up who might be a peer or even younger, that intergenerational living has done more than just the need of housing, you know? So, definitely trying to get out there, see where we can go and speak, and raise awareness is really important to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Where do you receive your funding?
So, we have funding from Portland Housing Bureau, Meyer Memorial Trust, Clackamas County, and Washington County. Did I say Care Organ as well? I'm Care Organ, yeah.
Thanks.
It's a great program.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a very cool program. I'm wondering if perhaps we can get a little piece in the pilot sometime in the next couple of months?
I don't know. Let me see. We'll be attached. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get some things out in different ways, but thank you, it's a really impressive program.
Thank you.
Highly needed.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll have somebody get in touch with you about coming to speak to Milwaukee Rotary.
Okay. Yeah, would love to.
Yeah, great.
All right. Next up, we have Providence, Milwaukee Community Desk, which will be introduced by the Community Desk Program Coordinator, Rachel Smith.
Hello, thank you for having me. As I said, my name's Rachel Smith, and I work for Providence Health and Services as a program coordinator overseeing the program that I'm about to tell you about. So, you heard the name Community Resource Desk, and you're probably wondering, what is this? The picture there is a little self-explanatory. It's really a physical desk that's located at some of our Providence facilities to assist patients and non-patients alike. It's open to everyone, completely free, patients, families, community members at large, to help navigate the social services in our communities. This can be from identifying, where can I go for a food pantry? How do I get clothing? Can, I need help signing up for health insurance? There's a wide array, but we really just want to have it accessible for people. It's staffed by a social service agency, Impact Northwest, which has been serving the tri-county community for over 50 years. They are bilingual, have a large bilingual, bicultural staff that offer services from housing and utility assistance, to seniors' guardianship, transportation to children, through some of after-school programs, work readiness, a whole wide array. Another question is probably, again, I talked about it a little, but what do they do? We have referral cards that are like this. They're about four and a half by six inches. The idea was that they were a little prescription pad mentality, because in a medical facility, that's where you're going to get providers to say, oh, that's easy. But again, it's open to everyone. Anybody just needs to share what their name is, some kind of contact information, and can identify a need. We have a lot of different ways. There's really a no-wrong-door policy. Anybody can just walk up to the desk, which is in this community at Providence, Milwaukee Hospital, right inside the main entrance of the hospital. They can just walk up, they can call the number. Somebody will be there in real time. We have somebody from Impact Northwest staffed 40 hours a week, every week during weekdays, for real-time, in-person service. But the phone is also a great option. They can still get connected to as much, it's a lot harder to fill out forms over the phone, but they've still done it many times. Or they can call and schedule an appointment. Again, there's really no wrong door, we just want to make sure that people can get connected to services. And on the back of these cards, we have some boxes. And that's really to collect some demographic information, including, you know, ZIP code, number of adults and children in the household, income, and a lot of that, although uncomfortable for people to often answer, is really to get the best services they can. A lot of programs are income-dependent, and that really requires income and number of adults and children in the household, so it's not wanting to waste somebody's time helping them apply for food stamps, and at the end, they're not eligible, or send them for anything. It's also making sure with the ZIP code that they're going to refer people to services that are actually near where they live and work. If somebody lives in Milwaukee, we don't want to send them to the food pantry in Oregon City. It is a program, again, that's open to everyone, it's not county-bound, but the desk here in Milwaukee, we really have tried to focus on Clackamas County, given that it's in Clackamas County, so services that are available within the county, but also knowing what's in Multnomah County, given that the line's so close. Then, one of the great things about having our resource specialists employed by a social service agency is that they have a lot of inside tips. This could be, call this number for energy assistance by 10:00 a.m., because by 10:30, they're going to be out of money on this day of the month. They also try to go to all the places that they refer, so when they tell somebody, go to my father's heart, here's exactly what it's going to look like when you walk in, here's the type of questions they're going to ask you, here's what your general experience you can expect to be like. Where, again, we had Clackamas Service Center, we went there, we toured it, we were able to understand who it is. Then, we also have a point-of-contact person, so you can go and say, go there, ask for Rachel, she'll be there, she'll know you're coming, or she'll know that you can talk to them, or, you know, ask for Jose, he speaks Spanish, and he's there on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, they have a lot of information that can really reduce the barriers to an unsuccessful connection as much as possible, because we really try to customize action plans, which can be a kind of scary word, and they're not as formal of, here's a list of 10 things to do, unless that's what somebody really wants. But really trying to customize those plans to be as specific as somebody wants them to, or as general. Sometimes, it's just, here's the resource sheet of, here's where the food pantries in your area are. Other times, it's, okay, let's call together to follow up on that application, or to call and get you an appointment there. Or even sometimes, people want, what do I specifically say when I go? And they can help with that. Again, I mentioned a little bit about Impact Northwest, who staffs our resource desk, but they serve, on average, about 36,000 people a year. They really see themselves as a poverty reduction agency, they're really trying to help people live independent, successful lives, which really aligns with our program together, and Providence's mission as well, to serve the poor and vulnerable. And it's that we're really trying to focus on, yes, connection to resources, but also that we're really trying to focus on, yes, connection to resources, but also empowerment and self-efficacy. We want people to know how to follow up on these different things, how to access these services on their own. Medicaid is a big one. A lot of people still don't recognize that they have a mental health, a dental, a transportation benefit. So we see a lot of people not getting the care they need. And some of it's, you know, educating people on how to access this on their own, how to make appointments, how often they can go to the food pantry per month, or per year, and how often they can get energy assistance, and how they do it, what they need to bring, so that they can take kind of action of their own lives. Because in a lot of cases, if you need access to services, you're feeling out of control in some element of your life. Again, how do I access the Community Resource Desk? It's right in the entrance of Providence, Milwaukee Hospital, so anybody can go in. If you walk in the main entrance, it's right across from kind of the emergency room, right? It's really the second waiting area. There's a big desk. It's a little hard to miss. There's a big poster as well, kind of showing what it is. I showed on the first page, our resource specialist there. We're just going through a staffing transition, but starting January 2nd is going to be Alexa. She's been working at one of our other resource desk sites in the Gateway Community. So she's very familiar with the program, and the resources, and how to work with individuals in crisis. She'll, we're starting with 8:30 to 5:00, but we always try to have at least one day where we're open until 6:30 or 7:00, because we realize that a big barrier to connection to services or access to them is, people work the times that services are open. So we'll be opening a late day. And one thing that I'm really excited about our Milwaukee location compared to our other four sites, is that we're going to actually be testing some home visiting. We also realize that not everybody can physically get to the hospital, or get to our resource desk, but have a lot of needs, that they might feel more comfortable in their home, or maybe transportation is a barrier, or they have kids, and it's hard to fill out a 45-minute application in the 35 pages for Medicaid, when your kids are antsy and running around. So meeting in the home, or in a place that people feel safe in the community, is a great opportunity. So, that's it. In a nutshell, I can talk about it a lot, but given time. But, does any of you have any questions?
Well, we circulated the cards before, but I appreciate you bringing more cards, because we definitely want to make sure.
I brought one.
English and Spanish?
Yes.
We definitely want to make sure we have enough for the police department, and the library, and the places people go. So, that's great.
Yeah, this, this concept is something that came up during our visioning process, that we, people talked about wanting to do something exactly like what you're doing in the library, because we thought there's a place that, you know, a lot of people go, particularly people, a lot of times, who are low-income, or needing a second place. And it's awesome that you guys are already doing it. My only criticism would be the times. That's when I saw, was reading the packet, I went, they need some late hours, or early hours, or something, something that's, for Saturdays.
Also finding that the mornings are pretty busy, so we might try to have one early morning day and a late day. The weekends is something we've kind of always touched on back and forth. The staff are always like, I want my weekends. But we, we realize that there is a need there, and that's when people can access services, or come to the resource desk. The hard thing is, a lot of agencies that they would call, or try to access, aren't open.
Aren't going to be open. Sure.
But then again, again, we're always willing to be a resource, really help level set. For instance, the Lions Club is a great opportunity for vision services. But as a volunteer organization, it's hard to keep up with the volume. So it's also preparing people that, you know, sometimes the wait time for a callback is one month. We can be your point of contact. We have all the information we need to make you an appointment, like, schedule an appointment for you. We can be that initial point, because sometimes people forget that the Lions are going to call me in a month, and what was this about again? So even if they're not open at those hours, we do really try to be as responsive as possible, or try to make sure that the connections can still happen.
Yeah.
And I'll keep you updated as our hours get updated. So we can share that as well.
Yeah, please, do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Next up is our Consent Agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the council minutes of the November 21st, 2017 regular session, two resolutions approving the purchase of replacement network equipment, and a voice-over Internet protocol phone system, a resolution accepting the tree board bylaws, a resolution accepting the Kill Our Good Neighbor Committee bylaws, a resolution acting as the local contract review board repealing existing public contracting rules, and adopting amended public contracting rules to reflect laws adopted by the state legislature. And finally, a resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University Institute of Portland Metropolitan Studies to prepare a housing affordability strategy for the city of Milwaukee. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Then I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Passes unanimously. Audience participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a green speaker card, available on the table in the hall, and identify Agenda Item Number Four, Audience Participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during public comment may be new to some counselors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up reports from the December 5th, 2017 Audience Participation? Ms. Ober.
There is not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
We received, the council received some, a request regarding a crosswalk flashing sign over Fernburg and Lynnwood. And I was just wondering, when we get requests like that, do they, is that put in the record for a certain council meeting, or?
They are not typically put in the record. And actually, I am not often CC'd. So part of this, just so you know, is there's an assumption that I will respond to something, and if I'm not on the list, you may want to check. So there's two ways that the community can get in touch with you. One is that they can choose individual email addresses off our website, and that's what most people do. Or they will give the underscore City Council email address, and then it comes to me.
Does include you.
So it's just, if you want me to respond, or if you want staff to respond, or if you want responses from staff, feel free to forward it to me, and we can get it taken care of. If it comes directly to you, typically, I'm not going to be in the middle. On this item in particular, I know that staff has spent a decent amount of time working directly with the constituent to try and get that resolved. And we're looking at the needs. There were actually a couple of, two different people wrote in on the same topic, and it made it a little muddy as to what the solution was. So we've been working with the original responder.
Okay. Thank you.
But we do think that we have some solutions.
Okay.
I might add, too, for when things are put in the minute of a meeting, or in the record of a meeting, it kind of depends on how it's aimed to. Ms. Ober noted that sometimes it's group shot to everybody, and it's sort of, some people write in a formal way, or sometimes it's tied to a topic that was brought up at a meeting. And so to make sure that we capture some of those things, that when staff has copied on it, we have put them in the meeting record, the closest meeting, just so that it's for sure in a record somewhere.
Okay.
But we can also do the follow-up and try to make sure that staff has it, too. So it's a little bit hit or miss, because sometimes it can come in in a formal channel, and it doesn't really get captured. And sometimes the public is very formal about how they're writing, and so.
Okay. I just, I thought that one of them had said that they were told it would be added to the packet, or put in a packet, or put in the record, or something.
That, and I think, in this case, I think it was. And I do remember that, too. And so that's one of those words that caught my attention, too. I think one of the people involved in that chain knew the protocol, or is heavily involved in a board of our city. And so realized that when he used that kind of language, it could be included in the packet, in a meeting record like that, too.
Thank you.
And it was. I think it's been included in the December 5th meeting, if I recall correctly.
All right. So I only have one, and this is from Damon Talbot. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
I am Damon Talbot, at 2406 Harrison Street. Good evening, staff, council, and mayor. Before I begin, I do need to disclose that I work for the American Red Cross. However, tonight, I am here as a citizen, and not at the bequest of the Red Cross. So I wanted to bring up emergency management, and that's why that disclosure was required. Recently, Captain Rash retired from the police department, and he was selected, according to our documentation, to be the emergency manager for the city of Milwaukee. While I was looking at this information, I did see that also some of the other items within the emergency operations plan are a little out of date. There's some FEMA trainings that no longer exist, but are listed in the document for the city. You know, it looks like a very fine time for me to do kind of a, for the city to do a review of that emergency operations plan with Captain Rash leaving. And you're going to have to be bringing someone else up to speed on the emergency operations plan anyway. And to replace him, it might take more than one person, from my understanding of hearing some of his abilities. So I haven't really taken a really thorough look at it. I just briefly looked through the emergency documentation at home the other day. And as I said, there's a few things, such as FEMA trainings that are expired and whatnot. I also did notice that the emergency operations plan describes that it should be reviewed every five years. And looking at when it was last dated was 2012. So we're almost a year overdue on that review. So again, a perfect time to start that process. So just kind of wanted to bring that up, and mention that it might be a good time to maybe look at the council forming a subcommittee to address those issues, maybe a working group, something like that. A few other things you might want to look at is, is it maybe time to think about having someone other than just someone at the police department take on that responsibility, so they don't have so many hats? Because emergency management preparedness is very important and critical for the city. Something else you might want to do is make sure that you have been doing the training and exercises that it mentions in the documents there. It says that you should be doing them every two years. I've only been here a short while, so I don't know how that's gone. But make sure everything's going according to that document. And, you know, my goal with this is, you know, the short time I've been in Milwaukee, it's a great city, I love it. And I just want to know that if a disaster happens, or an emergency happens, that our city is prepared, and we can bounce back and be resilient, and continue forward, and become a great city again if there's a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You guys don't have to stay, you know. I mean, you're welcome to. You're welcome to, but it may not.
All right. Next up, we have the expedited annexation of Elk Rock Island. File number A-2017-007, an ordinance. And this will be introduced by our Assistant Planner, Mary Heberling.
All right.
Time's up, Mary. Sorry.
Okay. So as the mayor said, my name is Mary Heberling. I'm an Assistant Planner with the city of Milwaukee, and I'm here to just present briefly on the expedited annexation of Elk Rock Island. So as you can see here, this is where the location is. It's near the island station neighborhood, right there. And it's pretty common amongst people in the community of where it is, and has been used quite often. Just a little kind of update of what's been going on. In April 2017, the title to Elk Rock was officially transferred to the city of Milwaukee from the city of Portland. And then in October, we filed for the annexation petition. It was still with Clackamas County. So what will happen with the petition for the annexation is, it will, the zone will be R10 with an overlay zoning designation of natural resource and real greenway, as well as a de facto community service use to kind of recognize the park aspect of it. That's just how we do annexations for open space in the county. So it meets all of the state, regional, and city criteria for annexations. The city notified all interested parties and persons. There were no objections by any necessary parties. And you have two options. You can either approve or deny the annexation. Or if you have any questions, you can ask those first two.
It would be quite something if we were to deny the annexation at this point. After all the work that's gone into it, yeah.
Yeah. No questions?
No.
No.
I would entertain a motion.
Oh, why not? Okay. I move for the first and second readings by title only. Our reader is gone, but okay. I move for the first and second readings by title only, and adoption of the ordinance, annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 11E3500100, Elk Rock Island, into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A2017-007.
I second.
Has been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only, and adoption of the ordinance annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 11E3500100, Elk Rock Island, into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-2017-007. Is there any further discussion?
I would just point out that it's 13 acres of park that we're adding to our inventory. So that's really exciting. I'm also stalling, because we don't have our...
Recorder, or the city manager, or?
You guys were just too excited about Elk Rock Island.
So it was, it was an interesting process, starting that conversation with Charlie Hales a couple of years ago, and working it through all those processes to.
We probably need to send them all a thank you card, or something.
Thank you for the island.
Thank you for the island, yeah. Not every day someone gives you an island.
Picture of the island on the front.
Yeah, one of those. Excellent.
First and second reading, we moved.
Yeah. So, it moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Ms. Ober, would you please read the ordinance by title only twice?
An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 11E35, space 00100, Elk Rock Island, into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File A2017-007. And again, ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 11E35, space 00100, Elk Rock Island, into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File A2017-007.
Mr. Staffer, would you please poll the council?
Council President Beatty?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Aye.
Councilor Abma?
Aye.
Councilor Faulkner?
Aye.
Mayor Gamble?
Aye.
Motion carried, 5-0, Ordinance 2158.
Congratulations. And Mark, you did a fantastic job on this, and staying with it. And I really appreciate what you did to get this, this island to us that we've been wanting for a long time, and should have had for a long time. So thank you for all your hard work on that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I also, just before we pass on, wanted to thank Stefan. Since he was sort of filling in for all of us, and picked this up and ran with it, I really appreciated it. So thank you to him and to Mary.
Yeah, this has taken a lot of various staff times, and attorney time, and all kinds of things. It's not easy to acquire an island.
Darn, I had it on my list for you.
All right. So, next up is the council goal Climate Action Plan Committee Member Selection. And this will be introduced by our Public Works Director, Peter Pastorelli.
Thank you, Mayor Gamble. Good evening. I wanted to give you a quick update on the recruitment process for our Climate Action Plan Committee first. So we started the recruitment just right after the Thanksgiving Day holiday. And we kept it open, the period open till this past Sunday evening. Over that period, we got about 25 applicants. 23 of them are actual residents of the community. I think we got a pretty good applicant pool, wide, a pretty good range of applicants, people that are interested in, certainly interested in the Climate Action Plan. We also reached out to our utilities, PGE, and Northwest Natural, the county. We've reached out to two of our big industries, Blount and PCC. And we've also reached out to the school district as well, to participate as members on the Action Committee. And we've, we specifically sent out invitations to those larger partners, the utilities, and the county, and received, so far, we received a yes from PGE, Northwest Natural, and the county, to participate on the committee. Natural, and the county to participate on the committee. So the next step that we need to do is go through the applicant pool and screen them and conduct some interviews in early January, and then bring those recommended list of applicants to the city council in mid-January for appointment to the committee. So what I'm asking for, or what I'd like to do, is have two city council members appointed to a selection board to select and recommend those applicants to the board as a whole.
Well, does it, I mean, I assume it could just be any two. I mean, I know the mayor wants to be one of them. But, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, is it important that, like, he and I are the ones who are on the CPAC? Does it matter that this is sort of info that's feeding into the CPAC, or not really, and any, you know, is there any synergy between having me involved in it, I guess, is what I'm asking, because I'm on the CPAC or not?
I mean, there is a linkage there. I think there's a chapter in the comprehensive plan that involves that. But, I mean, that's just part of that process.
Yeah.
I would definitely like to be one of those, too.
Well, I'd be happy to be, but I don't feel that I, you know, have to be. Somebody else wants to.
Having been through the climate reality training, I'm interested in it, but I, you know, also don't know what kind of time commitment, you know, it might be. But if there are other councilors that are interested...
25 people is a lot of people to, if you're gonna, you're not necessarily gonna interview all.
Well, then you sit on the committee, so...
Is this sitting on the committee, or is this...
This is for sitting on the committee.
This is for both.
It's for both.
Okay, so it's for the interviews and it's for sitting on the committee. And you do not have to interview all 25. It's up to the councilors to go through and assess how many interviews you want to do. We'll arrange those, and then we'll bring it back for appointments at the council level. But the same individuals, we would recommend then serve on the actual committee.
Yeah, that was as I understood it, is that it would be, these two people would continue to serve on this ongoing, well, not ongoing. It's relatively short-lived, if I remember correctly. I mean, in the scope of things.
We're hoping to have the process completed by July of 2018. There are three scheduled climate action plan committee meetings. Talking with the consultants, they thought that it was going to be about 20 to 24 hours worth of time for those, in terms of the meetings and preparation for those meetings over that six-month period.
Do they already have the, sorry, do they already have the dates for the meetings? Is that, you said they're already scheduled?
They're not finalized, but there are dates. We hope to do a meeting in late January, early February, and then, I think I might have the schedule right here.
No actual day has been scheduled yet.
No actual days have been scheduled yet, no.
Yeah, because I think for any of us, that would be important, because all of our schedules are so different and so...
So we're looking at the, yeah, the latter part of January for the first committee meeting, and then the first two weeks of April for the second one. And then the third one would be the first two weeks of June, sometime during that timeframe.
Of when, June?
June.
June.
Well, does anyone have a strong desire, I know that, other than the mayor, of being on it? I don't want to take anyone's spot. Happy to help if needed. I will be gone one week in early April, so I don't know what your date you're planning on, but...
Yeah, I feel the same way. I mean, I don't have, I would absolutely participate, but that does conflict with some family stuff for me, too. So if Wilda or Lisa have the desire.
I mean, I think the hard part for me would be the, I don't think the meetings would be the hard, the hard part would be, you know, how much time we spend on interviewing in January, but if, you know, assuming we don't end up interviewing 25 people.
Yeah, what do you think?
I mean, I'm happy to do it, then. I mean, and maybe it does make sense if I'm...
I think, I mean, and we know that there'll be reports back to us as a whole, you know, as you go along, so I'm certainly comfortable with that. I mean, you know, it's something I have an interest in, but I like the connection with the comp plan and the CAP, too. So I also like the idea of, you know, having Shane's legal brain on there, too. He sees things differently.
She's got a good legal brain.
I know. Well, we have three legal brains up here, but you also see things that, I mean, that I'm amazed that, you know, those little nuances sometimes.
If you're, if you want to do it, and given the comp plan tie-in, I think that that's appropriate. But again, I'm happy to participate if you...
Well, I'd be happy to have you do it. I wish I were fortunate.
Should we flip our card? The fortunate we are that we have several people that are interested in doing this kind of thing and performing this kind of service. And I think any of you guys would be terrific on that, but...
If I could add, that interview piece, I was envisioning that it would be, we would screen the applicants down to a pool of about 12, the 12 strongest ones, and then interview those to pick the candidates, probably.
If you screen it down to 12 to interview, and if the committee's 12, who gets booted?
Well, there's additional invited members, the PGEs.
So it'd be probably six people.
Six would come from that pool, and then the others are the technical type experts.
Specific slots, right? Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I wasn't real sure of the numbers. Yeah.
I mean, and certainly if there's stronger candidates and you want a bigger committee, then I think that's absolutely okay, too, so.
Flip a coin.
Rock, paper, scissors?
I would move that the mayor and Councilor Abma sit on that committee.
I would second that.
There we go. Do it formally.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that Councilor Abma and myself serve as the council representatives on the climate action plan committee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you for volunteering. Gosh, thank all of you for volunteering. It's pretty cool.
So next up, we're gonna finish the library construction task force portion of, the financial portion, the scary part.
It's less scary now, right?
It gets less scary every day.
Yeah, that's great. Scott, do you have the presentation ready? Or do I do that? Supposedly saved to the X drive.
Yep.
Oh, she's right. There's the library funding.
Was it Tepidia?
Yeah, it's a Tepidia.
You're gonna have to...
They got a lot of foundation money Georgia put in. One second. We have to get to the end. Oh, there you go. I think this is where we left off. Okay, so per your guys' staff report, you guys got the highlights of, sorry, of where we ended up. So you saw the awesome design that was presented earlier by the architects. When that was originally presented to us on 11-9, the cost estimate came in at 9.7 million. And so as a reference, in the original, the original project budget was 10.2 million, and that included a construction budget of 5.5. So the original variance, when it was presented to us, was 4.2. Between several, the task, or the project team meetings and the task force, we've been able to get that, narrow that down to an agreed deficit of 2.5 million, but that's still a really significant number. So we're coming to you today to kind of talk about potential options to bridging that deficit between the cost estimate and the design. I would also note that, at this point, you're through schematic design. So if I go back up here to here, there's three primary design phases. So we're, when we got these estimates, we were right here at the schematic design. So there's still a lot of risk in the design. There's still a lot that hasn't been designed. So the cost estimate is making assumptions on what hasn't been designed yet. So there, so I just wanted to put that out there.
And what that means for you is that we have contingency still in the budget for the schematic design component. We are including that when we tell you the 2.5 number. We're including that there, that that contingency has to sit in that pot at this time. But there is a chance, as we get through schematic design, that we will see a reduction because we don't expend the contingency. It doesn't, it doesn't solve our problem, but it does give you some understanding as to why we can't give you a perfect number tonight as to what you're trying to get to, because it's gonna fluctuate.
And is there no chance that that number goes up as design goes on?
So, I mean, with that, the risk, the risk can go both directions.
Directions, that's what I assumed.
So that's why you hold the contingency, to cover if it, the negatives to go up, but assuming that you're able to make choices that drive that down, hopefully, through your design and different specification choices of materials and things like that, then as you have more of those decisions made, your risk percentage goes down. And if you don't use the contingency, you can reasonably release some of that, and so it can be potentially part of the solution. We just can't rely on it currently.
What is the contingency amount?
1.132.
Yeah, so within the budget, there's 1.132, which is about 10 to 11% of the total project right now, which is reasonable, given, like I said, where we are at in the design.
When we spoke to Leila earlier today, just because she's doing a lot of these types of discussions, she was thinking that this portion, so the schematic design portion, and correct me if I'm wrong, was probably around 5% of the contingency. So once we get through the full design before we hit...
We're through, we're through schematic, but now we're into the design.
Thank you, actual DD. So once you get through that full design review, we'll know more.
I think she was saying, yeah, we should be holding about 6% once we're at construction. So there's, we're at 10%, that's 4% that we'd release.
As long as we don't use...
So with that, we have come up with some, again, approaches to potentially bridging this deficit. So in the staff report, we just had bulleted items, but I wanted to bring forward some additional options to get feedback from you guys. So I have them listed, the slides listed, in accordance with how they're listed in the staff report. So we're gonna start with city SDC charges and what I called on the staff report as fee in lieu of construction. Within the current budget that we've provided in the staff report, there's $150,000 allocated or estimated for SDC charges, and there's $300,000, that is the estimate for really frontage improvements. So there's multiple ways to meet our code as far as the frontage requirements go. So with, on the SDC side, I've also broken up the allocation between the different systems for the system development charges. That will give you some background as we go into the next slide. Our very busy engineering director also got me some additional stats, and he said that if we were to actually do a current estimate on if the project was eligible for FELOC, so there is eligibility requirements to be able to pay FELOC rather than make the frontage improvements on the project, it would come in at about $184,000.
So I don't, I don't follow, I guess, I mean, how can they not build the frontage improvements? That's the parking and everything. Are we talking about the Harrison side?
We're talking about Harrison.
We're just talking about the Harrison side, but they still have to build the sidewalk around, because they're gonna remove the fountain and get rid of a sidewalk.
So hence my comment, some improvements may still be required. We will, again, like I said, we're not going to leave it without a pedestrian walkway and finishing off it to some degree, but if the improvements, some of the eligibility requirements have to do with safety and whatnot of moving the street, then you can do minimal requirements versus building out to the full specs.
So the full specs have us having to actually move the street over.
Current modeling, I think, and again, Chuck might speak to this more, but he was saying that the, I think the current street design is narrower than what it would be required under the current modeling because of the truck traffic, because it is a main road.
So I have an odd question about SDCs. We have a library currently there.
Right, so these estimates are based on the differential. So the transportation, transportation SDCs, again, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're based on square footage and the translation of that to the number of trips that the building would create. So because we're going from 12,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet, we assume that more people will come to the library, and so that will create more traffic, which creates more of an effect on our streets. Like you said, we're not planning to increase the meter size, so there's no increase in water SDC. There's minimal in stormwater, because we're required to mitigate all of that on the property. And wastewater is just based on the variance in the number of fixtures. So we have so many in 12,000 square feet. If we have additional toilets and additional sinks and things like that, that's where you get the additional impact to the wastewater. So it is, the estimate is based on the variance of where we are now and where we're going.
So if, going back to frontage improvements, so we could save $116,000 if we let them pay FELOC, basically, is what that's saying.
So these are actually just kind of outlining the estimates in the current budget. Go to slide two. I've presented two alternate funding options, which, so again, none of the proposals here are proposing that we would waive any requirements. They all meet our requirements, they just meet them in different ways. And the different ways that we would meet them have different cost impacts. So the two options that we've looked at would be, the current Harrison street design has a very awkward intersection at 23rd. And so the, is it in the TSP? Two would be to actually change the configuration of the road to create more of a corner at 23rd, which would be more safe, and realign the road to meet all the standards. If we added that, if we added a CIP project to do those improvements and put it in our CIP plan to do in the next few years that the city was taking on, we would be meeting those requirements, not necessarily at the same time as the project, but we could take out the frontage cost from the project because we plan to complete them in the future. Also, because we're improving the property in front of the pond house, and that's not currently part of the project, if you will see a future recommend, or one of the other recommendations is to sell the pond house, if the property was not in the city's ownership, then we could get SDC credit for the improvements we plan to do in the CIP project. So it would take out the 150 of SDCs required and the $300,000 of what we would have, would have had to do in frontage improvements, and those would be satisfied by the CIP project to be concluded through that program. That, so, and we would be proposing that it would be funded by the new state gas tax that we will be receiving from the state starting next month. The project estimate is $530,000, and that would, so basically, if we were adding a CIP project to be happening sooner, that would mean that we would be deferring 8.5 blocks of street overlay projects in the near future.
I think that's 18.
18, yes, sorry. 18.5 blocks.
And so, I know this wouldn't add up to be a ton of money, but are there any fees in lieu banked in historic Milwaukee from previous things that can be attributed to this project? And I'm looking at Chuck, and he's shaking his head, no. Okay, okay.
We couldn't attribute it, but we could, even if there were some, we could use it in this area. But I don't know that that helps... in this area, but I don't know that that helps us anything.
So on the converse side, if another option to meet the requirements, if it was eligible, would be to pay FELOC and to do just minimal frontage improvements. So they wouldn't be required the full build out because it met the eligibility for FELOC, which the estimate was 185. So we would be paying a lower amount, but we wouldn't get the improved street. But again, the proposal would be, again, to get the costs out of the project budget since we have the deficit. So it would be proposing to subsidize the SDCs and the FELOC with the transportation funds. So you're at 150 plus the 184, which would be, I didn't actually put that in.
334.
About 334 versus 530. So you're deferring about 40% less of street overlays through that option, but you're not getting the improved street.
Right, and one advantage to improved street, I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but a lot of people, pedestrians cross there. And it's really dangerous right now with this improved concept for that intersection of 23rd and Harrison. There would actually be an actual crossing, which would perhaps...
It would also most likely, as I said, moving that corner out would actually revert property that is now right of way in the street back to the pond house property and potentially...
Increase its value?
No guarantees. It could potentially increase the building's value.
Building's value.
Yes. So, okay, so these are just options that we can consider as far as options.
Before we keep going, can we have a little discussion from council? What are your thoughts about these two options? And is there one you like more or less?
Or I guess the concept at all of using street funds and deferring overlays.
How little are the improvements going to be when we say that we'll do some improvements, but just the minimum?
We would be literally like just building the sidewalk to connect into the improvements as they are in front of the pond house, the minimum requirements to make them safe.
And if we did the full board, what does that involve on the improvements?
Like I said, it's realignment of the street to make an actual corner at 23rd and Harrison. And I believe it widens the street and it adds bike lanes. I'm not sure exactly what else.
I mean, I understand why that's desirable for the pond house and that it might benefit us in selling the pond house. But setting that aside, setting the pond house aside, that's not in the project scope for the library, is it? We don't have to do improvements that, even if we did the full frontage improvements on Harrison, don't they end at the creek? Don't they end at the overpass? No?
Well, not really. So that's part of why we're going to get into the next discussion around the property.
I've had this in mind already.
Can we get to that answer in a few minutes?
Well, that probably impacts, I think you got this question, but yeah, okay.
So maybe we should go all the way through the presentation and then come back through for decisions and questions.
Okay. So the next approach is to sell the pond house. We purchased the pond house for $400,000 approximately 10 years ago. And so we've attributed that value to potentially recouping those costs if we were to sell it. The ideal situation would be to consider potentially transferring it to the urban renewal so that it takes it out of city ownership so that we can get the immediate SDC credits for whatever project would be done. But that we would be able to allow the urban renewal to consider the most efficient way to have that redevelopment or evaluate those options while holding it through construction so that we could use it for operations during the temporary relocation where we have a lot less meeting space. But once the new, or the improved library is built with a community room, the programming will not need that space anymore.
Haley, can you talk a little bit about how we would pay into the library funding with that model?
So we would, if we were to pursue something with the urban renewal, I would recommend that we set it up as a sale funded by the deferred proceeds of when it actually sold on the market. And we would do some sort of internal fund transfer for the short-term cash flow needs of the project until those proceeds were available through sale, would be my recommendation.
So you're not saying that urban renewal actually buys it?
Correct.
Correct.
Because we don't have sufficient funds right now.
I mean, ultimately, if the urban renewal determined that economically it would have made more, they had a different purpose than the city and could make money that way. They could self-fund it. But the concept that we're pursuing at this point would be that it would most likely be a sale and so it would be a deferred proceeds.
And then can you talk about the segregated SDCs and how that works to Counselor Beatty's question about why we're worried about the pond house in this discussion?
Yeah. So as far as the frontage improvements go, well, the change in ownership has to do with getting the SDC credit. If you own both pieces, the same developer owns both properties, then they're benefiting from those improvements. And so you don't get a credit. But if it's in different ownership, then you can get credit for the benefit you're providing to another property. Additionally, I don't think the ownership really changes necessarily the frontage improvements. The requirement to complete a full block, you wouldn't want to improve just half of a block. So that's why the improvement for the CIP, you'd want to continue through the entire block, is my understanding.
So I have a question here that, it's actually, I'm sure there's more, but this just occurred to me and I haven't had this conversation before. So let's say we do all of this, or we transfer it and then we eventually sell it, and then somebody redevelops that. And we've already taken care of all of their frontage improvements. Can...
We recoup?
We recoup from that sale somehow the frontage improvements that we do that they would have had to have done when they redeveloped that.
Well, ideally, you would have gotten more money for the property.
Just changed the price of the property, sell.
You would have gotten more money for the property, ideally.
Nobody bases the property on that kind of a thought. They base it on square footage and number of bedrooms.
That's the theory behind the way the SDCs and stuff go.
Or why you would get credit.
So there is no actual way to recoup directly the...
Not dollar for dollar. It's like if you do a home improvement, you remodel your kitchen, you're not going to necessarily get to add the exact dollar amount that you spend. Kitchens and bathrooms are probably worth more than some of the other improvements, but again, it's never a dollar for dollar.
And to answer the question on the frontage improvements, basically, the truck traffic, as you actually witnessed out there, you see truck marks right in the grass and stuff because they're jumping the curbs now. So the consultants' preliminary stuff that they've presented show that rear tracking would actually require improvements through about 2/3 of the pond house frontage just to get the truck traffic through the corner. So even if, so what normally happens in a case like this is they do their frontage improvements, you're required to build what's in front of your parcel. But in this case, the curb is 2 feet, 3 feet behind the existing curb at the end of the frontage improvement. So you now have to somehow figure out how to get everything back and you have to create a safe condition. The safety issue here is the truck turning movement of Harrison, which is a primary arterial. And that would take you through 2/3 of the pond house before you ever get back to the existing curb.
I don't fully follow that.
I'm sorry, I don't.
So basically, you have to improve way more than your frontage in order to safely construct a road that will handle the traffic that is on that road. Because the road is underdesigned now, and that's the requirement of the neighboring developer.
So let's say this was a third party, not us at all. Let's say it's Tharkhorst owns that piece of property.
The pond house?
Pond house?
The pond house and the library. And they're getting ready to develop just the library parcel.
They would have to...
Well, would they be required to fix our bad road simply because they were redeveloping?
Well, they have the same options. I mean, the requirement is, as Tim will tell you, is that we require the frontage improvements. The FELOC's your option because there's a safety issue at the end of your property. So if you just improved your frontage, there would be a severe safety problem in the road. So that allows FELOC to kick in according to one of the five requirements that you guys have in the code. So if you don't, if you want to build it out and make your property look pristine, then you're going to have to go beyond. Most developers do change the name of the ownership. They put it in a different LLC.
So they're doing the same thing that we're doing. And they get the SDC credits, that then the SDC credits can either reduce your costs on this project or be applied to other projects generally.
No, it can't be transferred. It has to stay with the property.
Can you explain the SDC credits a little bit more for me?
So basically, anything you do beyond your property lines that increases the capacity of the facility that you're constructing is eligible for SDC credits up to the value of the improvement on the SDC. So if you're paying $50,000 worth of transportation SDCs and you do $100,000 worth of off-site improvements, you're only going to get the 50,000. It's capped at that limit. So if you do 40,000, then you only get 40,000 and you still pay $10,000 for your building permit.
Okay.
But it would basically, the improvement that the city would do on the other piece of property, or the other piece of property would be required to do, you are having to do to create the safe street. So you're getting compensation for the additional requirements.
Did I say that?
It would be helpful to have a picture of this. I really don't follow this at all.
It's super confusing.
I'm sitting here thinking that. This is the fourth time I've heard it and I still am not really super clear.
You know where the sidewalk comes down and the big tree's there?
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
That's where people jump the curb.
That's where the people have jumped the curb because it curves right there. And then it goes back towards the pond house. So it's that right there.
I think they get the physical part, it's the...
But is that, I mean, yes, there's a curve, but it's a very wide street. So it's not a question of trucks not having access. Is it not a question of going too fast? And are there not other sort of mitigation things that could be done to affect the truck traffic without rebuilding the whole road?
Well, you're not really rebuilding the whole road. I mean, one thing we have advantage is there's a very wide street. So the consultant that, you have HPR, is that who you have, working on this, has been looking at altering where the center of the street is in order to give more space to the library side. But you have to realize, part of the problem is, is those trucks, there's a lot of traffic both directions. So you have to be able to accommodate that on your side of the center line. So right now, they would be recommending to basically move the center line away a little bit, and they still have to do some widening on the inside by the split rail fence in the pond area. Because the rear ends of, we're designing for WB50s, WB67s have to be accommodated. That's the length of the truck.
For my trucks.
And so, because it is an arterial, so basically the length, those rear duallys on that big, long truck don't track where that cab's going. And so we have computer software that basically shows us where they're going to track. And it shows us going up onto the grass and onto the sidewalk currently.
So is the deal not just moving the center line, but also making it less of a curve and making it more of an angle slant or something?
It would be in the curb line, yes. They would have to, what they're, the latest one I saw, they would be widening the lane from 11-foot lane to a 14-foot lane through the curve in order to accommodate those trucks.
So my concern about that is exactly what Katie was saying. The place where they jump the curb is also really close to that tree. So if we're talking about moving the curb in more towards that tree, I have concerns about damaging the root system in that process.
And in their models, the trucks won't be near the tree. It's actually near the split rail fence up by the pond is where they're concerned.
In the construction.
Well, in the construction of fixing all of this.
Street.
And the back of the walk is basically where the back of the walk is now with the tree, because there's no right of way needed in front of the tree. The other, secondary issue here is that the properties actually extend out, the street is actually on library property now. It is not inside its right of way. So there has to be some kind of accounting and adjustment of the right of way. And so that's how this all started, is we told them they were going to have to do dedication in order to accommodate a road. And we've basically tried to make sure and give them a lot of flexibility in how that S-curve is done to get from Harrison Street over to Harrison Street through that curve. But it all, the sharper you make those corners, the farther off-track a semi-truck goes when it's making that turn. So the less you can do the corners.
And so do I, I just want to make sure I understand, I mean, I get that that's a mess out there. But the reason we have to do anything on the pond house property is because the only way to build a safe, the only way to build a sidewalk around a curbeltide or a sidewalk where the fountain that's currently there or whatever is putting pedestrians in harm's way because the trucks cut that corner. Is that what you're saying?
No, well, you have to go on to the pond house. This typically happens everywhere downtown as far as the standards downtown. And most people pay FELOC that have happened downtown. And that's basically all the funds we had in the Downtown Association that went to the 17th project, unfortunately, were because of the fact that you can't really do anything without doing the whole block because the curbs move too much. So in this particular case, it moves both directions. In some of that portion of the curve, it's going on the inside. And then when it goes the other direction, it flies way out into that sea of asphalt that would actually benefit pedestrians in shortening up those crossing lengths in those crosswalks if we got 23rd designed right. So there's a huge advantage for us as a city. It's really one that I would be, I'm torn as, as your engineering director is, because there's a huge advantage to the city to have that block finished off and done for pedestrian safety. But...
The offset is the additional work for engineering and the additional cost.
Yeah. Well, and that we lose 18 blocks of overlay somewhere.
So cost.
Or don't lose it forever, but it's delayed.
It's deferred for quite a while.
Yeah, and that's the bad side to it, you know? So FELOC's an option here because the curbs are such, it would comply based upon what I saw from the consultants this week.
Haley, can you go back to the slide before?
It gives me a headache.
No, I guess, just a quick question. On option two, are we still using gas tax money?
Yes. Either way, I'm recommending gas tax money. The second option just uses less.
Okay, so just also acknowledging that either way, you're losing some overlay. But you're losing $170,000 less, so that's 2 fifths of the money taken out. So my guess is you're probably looking at closer to like 12 blocks of street overlay instead of 18.
Chuck's noting that it's with the subsidization of the SDCs, we would not only, we could only use gas tax for the transportation portion. The other portions would, I'm proposing, would be funded by the applicable systems on restricted fees.
So by general fund?
No.
No, then by what?
Water, so you'd use water fund balance, which was generated by water fees to pay the SDC fees. So you're still using the water funds to support the water system. You're basically taking less restricted water funds and making them more restricted because then they have to be used for the safer SDCs.
But there was no SDC water, right?
So what...
But you're saying in general.
Bad example left.
Way to give us a bad example on a really confusing thing.
So can you, actually, can you give the example then on transportation? What would those funds be?
So transportation SDC is 107, stormwater is 5, the current estimates, again, these will evolve as the design evolves, water is zero, hence the bad example. Parks would have to come from general fund, wastewater, and then the wastewater. Parks would have to come from general fund, wastewater and then the wastewater.
So, but the transportation, what funding mechanism would we use to pay for the 107?
I'm proposing the new gas tax.
So the new gas tax would be used to pay the SDCs and would be paid for the FELOC?
107 and the 184, that's how we got to the 330 about. So it's 330 versus 530.
And something to point out, until this transportation package passed last year, there weren't these new gas taxes that were going to pave those 18 blocks. So...
Correct.
From the standpoint of what people had expectations for, those weren't like...
So that's not undercutting the SSMP?
No.
It's all new gas tax.
This is all new. And it's also, I would be careful to say that we're not paving those things. What we're doing is we are delaying it further. Because what you're talking about here is this is an ongoing new tax that we will be collecting and we will just get to them later. We will start them later in the programming instead of sooner.
Prioritize this.
Right.
But like already said, it doesn't affect what's currently in the capital improvement plan for SSMP.
Correct.
And we have the potential that the county could still come back and do their...
Right.
Oh, the fee.
Registration fee.
What does that look like? I mean, what is the likelihood of that?
Politically?
Yeah.
Bernard really wants it, so I don't know.
It's a toss-up right now.
I have Chuck in the back of my head saying that when he came forward with his previous improvements, that before anything was adopted by the county, we did have a deficit in the need for overlays, so...
Oh, yeah. I think we all know that.
And that the state gas tax only made up a portion, the new one only made up a portion of that, hence the other system. So we're still not meeting the need, but we're meeting more needs than we were before we had the new gas tax.
So the county wastewater SDCs are estimated at 25,000 compared to just 2,400 for us?
Yeah, that's the treatment portion. It's based on equivalent dwelling unit. They still use the old builder, which is a square footage...
It's just based on square footage then?
Yeah, it's a usage type thing. It's, I'm not really positive on how it is, but it's a, it's the older style equivalent dwelling unit. So they take the use and equate it to a single-family dwelling.
Kind of like for transportation, we equate it to trips.
So wait, we're building 8,000 basically square feet more than we have?
Yes. We're going for about 12,200.
And so say that's 2,000 square foot houses, that's four houses? That's more than four houses worth of...
No, the county SDCs are high.
Is over $6,000 per EDU.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're ridiculous. That's the whole conversation around the ADUs. That's why I keep pushing because it's insane.
I want to say an ADU is like 4,900.
Are you sure?
The full one is over six.
Yeah.
ADU versus EDU.
Is that in our contract with the, so that, these SDC calculations are part of the IGA for wastewater treatment services?
Right. It's with, yeah, the IGA that we have with WEX or the county specified the EDU concept and that we reconcile that on us every six months and I, and then we write a check to the county for the increase, the net increase.
And we're a little different than all the other jurisdictions. We have our own separate fee schedule within CCSD, number one, primarily because the city of Milwaukee owns the collection system.
Well, it's a wholesale contract versus being a part of the district. So should, thoughts?
Personally, I sort of lean towards getting that fixed. And I know that it's painful to think about not paving or getting more streets overlaid sooner, but that's, it's a bad corner. It's been a bad corner since I've lived in this town. People cross there all the time, daily. And it's really dangerous. I've seen lots and lots of close calls. And yeah, that, the whole curb is destroyed there because of trucks going up on top of it.
Well, and I think your point about it being new money, that the community wasn't necessarily...
It doesn't take anything away from...
Right, it's not taking anything away from anybody that people were expecting. Right, that was, that's...
And this goes without saying, but you also just closed $450,000 worth of your gap for building a really impressive library. So if you're comfortable with one or, actually either item, we're able then to reduce our budget load, which is really important tonight for us to actually select some of these options so that we can start figuring out how close we are to getting to our goal.
And does building that mean that that 107 of SDCs also come off?
Right.
There's like, there...
That's the SDC credit part.
We get the twofer for that 107,000.
That's why it's kind of a win-win.
It's a two-part concept, actually. You have to also adopt option C, in which we pursue the sale of the pond house so that we can get the ownership out to get that credit. But yes, then you do get both the full 450 impact to the project budget.
Even if we're not actually selling the pond?
Even if you are simply selling it to yourself, i.e. to Urban Renewal, that does count because you're a separate entity. So, and, and this is, in the law, this is a legitimate separation of agency. And we very specifically, you sit as a separate board when you sit as the Urban Renewal Board.
Well, and like Chuck said, it's similar to what private developers do in transferring it to other LLCs.
And it's, you should see the plan for that corner. It actually does add a significant amount to that piece of property. So it, there's high potential that somebody could come in and literally redevelop that into a restaurant or something that needs more than just the little space that's tucked up against the pond there. It's a pretty big shift.
So are you comfortable, so we're going with option one? Nodding from three, four, or... Then let's go to the next slide.
All right. Thank you.
So that included option C?
Yep.
Yeah, that has to happen.
Okay, this one I think is easy. It doesn't change the design or require other funding. We have realized...
Escape funding.
Oh, yeah, Chuck can go home now.
I don't believe that for one second, but anyway.
There might be more questions.
It is the holiday week, just so everybody remembers that.
Have fun.
So in the last fiscal year, we recognized $96,000 of interest revenue that was not expected in the library fund because we're twofold. One, the economy's picked up, so the interest rates are higher and we're earning more interest. And two, because of the large deposit of the bond proceeds that are sitting in the bank. So having recognized $96,000 already, I think it's reasonable to assume that we could make another 104 over the next two years because the bond, the deposit will get spent down as we have project costs. But we have at least another six months before we move into construction and significantly spending that down, so we have that time to earn the interest. So I would recommend that we then, through the budget process, dedicate that 200,000 of additional revenue to the project.
That is an easy one.
Very easy one. By my calculation, we just did four, no, because we did the pond house and we did... So I think you actually did one, a little over a million.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
So the pond house, that 400 was based on a current...
So the 400, because it will be for a sale, we are not disclosing the current appraised value. We felt like it was, we were comfortable that the 400,000 that we bought it for, we would be able to recoup. So that's why we put it in here without putting the actual appraised value in. Is that fair?
Yeah, but I have a question that I'll ask at a later time.
Sounds lovely.
I can't imagine what that question is.
I'm going to thank you so much.
So this is a goal. And as you can see, I have lots of caveats in here. Within the, so we talked about how the estimates were higher and then they've already come down from the 4.2 deficit to the 2.5. That negotiation with the project team included 400,000 of value engineering that the architects and the contractor have committed to doing with their current estimate. What this slide is saying is that we are going to ask them, in addition to that 400,000, to target an additional 500,000.
An additional 500,000.
Right, so that's 900,000 of value engineering. And so I don't know if that's realistic or not. And these don't include the 300,000 of, so an example of value engineering would be what the contractor and the architect did when they re-looked at the HVAC systems and really defining those specs so that they were able to shrink the impact of the radiant floor to be able to meet the requirements of the building, but at a lower cost. So basically, we're asking them to do that in everything that they continue to design. And so again, at this point, this is what I'm asking them to do, or the project team, we are asking them to do. But we will need to check in at, we will get another hard cost estimate at design development. We're through schematic design, so design development and then construction design. And towards, at the end of construction design or development is when we're, we should be through design and that's when we need to sign the GMP or the guaranteed maximum price with the contractor for the construction. And so at that point, we need enough risk to have come out to bring the cost down so that we are comfortable that we have funds to be able to sign that contract.
She won't let me unless she actually knows where the money's coming from.
Yes.
Right.
She's mean, that one.
She really is.
But this won't come as a surprise to...
So we're being, we're full disclosure.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, no, they've, they're already aware of this. They are. They have expressed concern that they're really high targets.
Okay.
So they have expressed concern and I'm in turn conveying that. But I didn't want them to assume that that $8 million price was feasible for us to pay for a building and so we need everybody to be working to bring this down. We're creating, sacrificing or making other priority choices and so I'm asking them to do the same.
Makes good sense. Why not?
I have, I have less confidence in 900,000 there, but... Heard?
We actually talked a lot about that line item. And this is one of those places where we have to ask and we have to try. And there has to be a big number to push for because we're all trying to hit this number. We need them to come to the table with us.
Yeah. Just on that one system, they, they found, what was it, 250,000?
350,000.
$350,000. So that, you know, three more discoveries like that and we're there, but...
And there's other, other places, you know, where they're talking about maybe not having quite as many windows and, you know, not having the, what was it, glazing and, and, you know, instead of having a full window, especially like where the staff is, you know, have a half wall. You know, so there are many things that, I mean, this is starting. You saw, you know, here's the whole design thing, we're here. So we're, we're working as closely as we can to, you know...
There's a lot that hasn't been designed too. The cost estimate is based on what they don't know yet. And so as you go through that, there's risk, it could go both directions, but we're asking them to make the choices that make it go down.
What do we, we haven't really talked about this, I don't even remember in our committee, the demolition costs.
So those who are in those, I believe those, is it in the budget? Yeah, the site improvement money, right?
It's being carried on the contractor side of the dollars. So it's in that 8 million.
It's just in the big 8 million number.
We have a detailed budget, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the demolition portion of that was.
What, what's your thinking about that?
Well, just, I mean, that's got to be a total wild guess too. Because you don't know what you're going to get into. It's, you know, old building, actually it's four old buildings or something like that.
But demolition versus a reconstruction, you limit that risk because you're taking...
Oh, yeah. No, I know that.
And we have done geotech studies and a lot of due diligence, so, I mean, there is still the possibility that will come up. There could be, I mean, we've done boring so that we don't believe there's groundwater on both sides or whatever, but something like that could come up and that's why you have contingency.
Okay.
Keep going.
So again, this kind of goes back to Ann's comment earlier related to the solar and some specific grant opportunities there. But there's lots of other grant opportunities, actually. We need to thank Stefan. He's spent a good amount of time in the last month. And a community development intern who I don't know her name.
I don't know her name.
What was her, our intern's name?
Laura Combs.
Laura Combs and Stefan have spent a lot of time combing through the interweb, looking for all of these grant opportunities.
And a lot of people, they don't want to do construction. So, you know, they look really interesting and then he says, oh, no construction. So he went through a very long process. And he's given us a good list.
But we are looking at opportunities, if there were programmatic type funding that we could realistically, that was, we could get, where we could get that and then we could reallocate other funds that were programming for the construction. So we're looking at it from all angles. But we have a conservative estimate, well, I don't know if conservative is the best word. We think it's a realistic target of 200,000 with some of the items that we've targeted.
There is a article in the, Councilor Parks pointed, pointed it out earlier about a city of Halsey. I have no idea even where that is, but I'm guessing...
Brownsfield.
Is it? Okay, I was guessing it was Timber Country because some of their money came from the George Pacific Foundation. But they got a bunch of foundation money to help with their, they were refurbishing an old building. But, so there's a list of foundations in there that do give some grants for libraries. So I'll make sure Stefan sees that.
That would be great. I think we ended up with four pages of links...
Oh, yeah.
That he investigated. And we narrowed it down to about six that we think we should look at. We are going to be allocating some staff resources from my office to actually doing grant writing to try and maximize this. This was a number that I felt like we could hit. It doesn't mean it's all we're doing. So we will do everything we can to, and that's going to come in in the next couple of slides where you see that is a part of our fundraising efforts. But this number, I felt like we could at least expect to be able to find offsets.
So basically, if, if I'm following the outline in the staff report, if all of these options or approaches were realized at the values that we've estimated, we would still have a $750,000 deficit of the 2.5 million of the current estimate. So the next two slides, we haven't assigned dollar amounts to, but they're basically what our options would be to make up the funding, the funding if we were to proceed and the costs came in as they are currently estimated. So the first is a reallocation of operational funds for allowable costs. Again, we're looking at this from all perspectives of using allowable funds as we can, but if you're taking funds from one place, that means you're deferring or not doing something else. So there's always a give and take there. But it, it would come down to either a general fund contribution, savings and asking departments to save or cut, programmatic and other places, intentionally waiving non-restricted, non-regulated city fees and/or using system-specific funding on allowable costs. So again, there are the stormwater improvements that they talked about on the site. It's a public, it's part, will be part of the public stormwater system. We could consider using stormwater fee resources to pay for those allowable costs of the project.
So I brought this up in the work session, the energy savings that this building is going to create and therefore the lower operational costs of running this building. It would be very interesting to know what those are.
Mm-hmm.
And then...
And we will be continuing to...
There might be the potential even to, to find some system where they...
Some sort of interfund loan that's repaid over time. It's just watching the cash flow currently, but that's how you would fund something like that. Reduced operating costs would re-release some of the library's operating budget to then pay this back over time. What they were paying in energy, they could pay.
Because it's going to be like a fifth of the current energy is.
Well, with the sale of the pond house, you'll see a reduction, but if we're continuing to use that facility for the next couple of years, the urban renewal would pay that component. But there... component, but there would be savings in the general fund. You would see a reduction in energy use at the library itself.
That's what I mean.
And I think you're probably, I would go a 50%, just thinking through, you're adding 8,000 square feet, so you're probably, you're gonna have a lot of savings, but it's not gonna be everything.
But we could estimate a time period of which we could repay something like that, for sure. We'll evaluate all of those options.
Yeah.
And looking at, at these resources as we go into the budget season. And then the last, what the other opportunity we have is to do a fundraising campaign. So, these are just some bullets of potential opportunities. But being the face of the city, this would be something that we'd be looking for, obviously staff would be supported administratively, but we'd be looking for your guys' help in, in getting this word out or being the champions of some of these campaigns. So, sponsorship opportunities, we've been developing, we're, again, the design has really cool spaces, like a new teen space that we haven't had before, a community room that we haven't had before. There's lots of amenities that both enterprises and private donors could be interested in funding. So, we've already talked about developing a book of those items and we've already, Ann and Alma have already started meeting with some of the larger entities in the area and looking at what kind of opportunities we have there. If we could get a donor to put up a large amount of money, say 50 or $100,000, if the rest of the community was, they'd be willing to match up to that large dollar amount if we got other donations, those campaigns are generally very, very successful because people feel, are, rather than giving just the $100, they're giving $200 with that match. A Bricker donor wall, I think we're potentially looking for another organization like The Friends or some, someone else to maybe manage a campaign like that or approach them to see if they'd be willing to. And we've talked about a GoFundMe campaign. Again, Katie and I were talking, those are generally more successful if you're campaigning for a very specific thing. So, again, some of those opportunities through the sponsorship, we could target a few of those things that we think would be successful through a GoFundMe and really have a targeted amount and have a specific campaign related to that. And I've, we, as we've been talking about the need for fundraising, getting a letter together in the next week or so to get out for a year-end campaign, there's lots of people and businesses that people's companies will donate if you put in requests. So, we're really towards the last end of the year, but we could get out a letter for this year, but we also have the opportunity next year to continue that campaign and maybe start a little earlier.
I may be incorrect on this, but I think I'm right. So, all of the kinds of things, so if The Friends, which is a 501(c)(3), right, if they manage and administer things like the Bricker donor wall and even a matching campaign and those kinds of things, then for those who contribute to those, it becomes a charitable expense that can be deducted from your income tax. But if you go through GoFundMe, it's not, is my understanding, because we've just dealt with that recently on the Peace Officers Benevolent Foundation, that the money that went through GoFundMe, people did not get to claim that as a charitable deduction because of, because of the vessel, I guess, in which it was deposited and the percentage of it that they take and so on and so forth. Like I said, I'm not 100% sure, but it bears looking into.
There's investigation.
So, if, but if The Friends, like do a donor wall or something, you know, or they do a matching campaign, because it's done through a 501(c)(3), a bona fide local 501(c)(3), then if I give you $100, it's $100 deductible.
There are, I don't know if it's Go, it's not GoFundMe itself, but there are a couple of crowdfunding sources that are charitable.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah.
Yeah, so we definitely have to do it.
But some of them are not, and so just, if we're looking into anything like that, be very careful.
I do know that as a government, we are considered a nonprofit and so charitable donations made directly to the city can also get that charitable donation status. And so, we would be able to provide letters that would give the donors documentation to be able to have that through the city. But as far as GoFundMe or other vessels, we definitely want to research that so that we were communicating that correctly.
I can't remember, there's one for sure that...
Yeah.
And I do know people would, no offense to the city, but they would rather say, "I'm giving money to the library, not to the city," no law.
Yeah, sure, true. Well, but here we get to the dilemma about The Friends, which is that, I mean, I, so I do a, I'm hoping there's somebody out there, we have a guardian angel fundraiser out there who will step up and help Friends. Like, we have a page on the CMI website where we encourage people to give charitable donations and we have all the links to all the nonprofits around town and there's one or two down at the bottom that don't have any online ability to donate. And that's always been the problem with The Friends.
Right there.
Yeah.
The Friends do not at this time.
Right.
So, that would be... An online presence.
Right.
And we also have a foundation, a library foundation, which does not.
A good computer person can fix that, it can make you a site. Yeah, we, hopefully there's some volunteers out there to... Yeah, exactly. Come help. Well, and, and that's a really good point, Lisa, because, again, just using my experience recently with the Peace Officers Benevolent Foundation, we found that same thing. We did not have a way that people could actually donate directly online or even like participate in our golf tournament directly online, which helps charities, so it was, you know, again, it's taxable. And as soon as we built that piece of our website, it all changed, you know. So, it, it, it works, it truly does, it works really well.
As long as it's easy, you know, the easier it is for people to give...
Absolutely.
Makes a difference. My brother...
Easy and secure, I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, and I know my brother, I, I need to look at this because my brother said he would donate to, for my Christmas present, he would donate to the library. And I said, "Oh, that's a great idea." And then he, so he sends me the CMI, says, "Well, I was looking and I don't see where I can donate." And I said, "Where were you looking?" You know, "Look no further."
Send you a check, huh? Right, but he's looking online, yeah.
Doing, because what he was looking at, it sent him to the Oregon Trust.
Oh, yeah, the cultural trust.
Yes.
Right.
And that was the only way he could see to donate. And I said, "Oh, no, 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 no."
Well, but that... But, but, and, and only a portion of that comes back to each county and so it has... No, but that's an incentive for people to give, the charitable trust match. Because then they can match it. Because there's a tax incentive for that, so playing up that charitable, I mean, if we can get a fundraising campaign going, that's something to play up. Exactly, yeah, exactly right, because as long as the library is listed as one of the cultural trust recipients, and if it is, then, I know the museum is and like New Century Players is and that kind of thing, but, and it relatively easy for something like a library to get listed, I'd be sorry. Yeah, yeah.
And there's little things, like we have our patrons we encourage in the sign up for Fred Meyer or, you know, Safeway, they will...
Or Amazon Smiles.
If we could just get more people to do that.
Especially now while they're all shopping online.
Ah, it's a little bit too late, but, you know, but that also, we have accounts set up for all of those.
Mm-hmm.
For the library, well, for The Friends.
For The Friends, right.
Then intern comes right to us.
Because that's really what people are gonna relate to a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit charitable deduction on your income taxes, The Friends, they don't think about that for the city so much.
No.
So, yeah.
Haley, did you consider...
You've already been talking to The Friends about contributions they may consider.
Yes.
Did you do any investigation into Bitcoin?
I, I, that makes me a bit nervous.
I can't figure out Bitcoin, I don't get that at all, I seriously don't, I'm like, duh. Well, if we'd, if we'd bought two Bitcoin 20, 15 years ago, we'd be in good shape, yeah. Oh, I see.
It's kind of like if you invested what you spent on your first iPod in Apple, you'd be...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just to sort of round this out, we're asking for help. We will be in touch with you over the course of the next couple of weeks just because of the vacations, but we would, we will be inviting you to come to meetings to look at the fundraising documents, to make sure that they work for you, to take edits. And then also just to help you arrange meetings, staff is happy to go with you to those meetings. So, just let us know your comfort level and how you'd like to structure those. We know that some of you have things going on during the day, so we will try and keep that in mind as we're setting up meetings so that they're at least close to the beginning or end of day and maximize your ability to get there. Is that fair?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for all the effort that everyone's put into this.
I do think we need to, I think we need to try and get an article in the Clackamas Review and just be out there saying, "We've got this shortfall, we're looking for help, we're looking for fundraisers, we're looking for..."
We wanted you to hear this first.
Yeah, no, I, I sure...
So, now that we're there, we can work with Jordan on getting some outreach, right?
And getting, getting a web presence for The Friends, I think, is item one.
Oh, I do, yeah.
That's not that expensive to do, even if we just have to pay for it.
No, we actually have a, an employee who has been interested in helping us figure out some of these pieces, so we'll talk to them, too.
Good.
But we wanted to just, I mean, I, I think we'll just feedback on the GoFundMe page is really critical tonight, so we wanted to make sure we had a discussion on this before we proceeded down the path.
Yeah, we'll definitely want to look into maximizing the benefit to the donors.
And I know Robert has been looking into it and he's already told me, there has not been a GoFundMe for a library west of the Rockies.
Oh, really?
Rest of Colorado. You know, it's mostly on the East Coast. And, you know, and going through what other people have paid for, you know, you need to have a specific, you just can't say, "We want $750,000, thank you."
Yeah.
So, you know, so I said, "Okay, well, let's look for, you know, we're, we're gonna come up with three or four things and then we're gonna decide, which one are we gonna go out for."
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna do any good to say, "Oh, here, you can choose one of four." We want it to be successful.
The article about Halsey, Oregon, said they did have a GoFundMe, but they didn't raise very much through it. But they raised more by raising the awareness, by actually going out with coffee cans into the businesses downtown and, you know, up and down the street and the kind of pocket change kind of camp, campaign, just at least raise the awareness and got people talking like, "Oh, yeah."
And then that would direct traffic to the website. I have a question about The Friends. So, when, if we were to create more of a web presence for that and an ability to donate, would it, is there some conversation we need to have with The Friends about how that money's dedicated and, you know, allocated to specifically construction of the library versus, I don't know, you know, books for sale or...
Well, you can specify that when people contribute and that's where it goes.
Yeah, it, yeah, it could be that they say, you know, "This is not for membership, this is for the library."
Right.
Or we'd be asking them to do a specific campaign and if they come out and say it's for a specific purpose, then they would be held by standards to use it for that purpose.
Okay, that's my question.
And right now, all money that they get goes to the library. I mean, their membership goes to the library, they, you know, the, all the book money, all of the planned sale, all of that goes to the library. And then also, we're just going to kind of reexamine what we, I mean, this year, our wish list was $55,000. Well, if we say we don't, let's cut back the wish list a couple of years, you know, then we can get that money to go into a fund. So, I'm, I'm very confident The Friends, on their own, will be making a donation to us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So...
Awesome.
Good?
That's all I have.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tremendous amount.
Thank you, Stefan. Very much.
Creative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Stefan did a lot.
For all the grant stuff and everything, yeah.
He keeps on thinking he's gonna leave.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Katie. All right. I do not appear to have a...
Script?
Oh, of...
Did I take this? Well, it's Christmas season.
There we go, it was tucked into the...
Yeah, we got it.
All right. So, the Willamette Christmas ships fleet will come by Milwaukee Bay Park one last time tomorrow evening, Wednesday, December 20th, getting to Milwaukee by around 8:00 PM. Come early and stick around downtown. Some businesses will have extended hours and many are open until 8:30 or later. With temperatures dropping, warming centers are open to the, opening to the public at various times during the winter months, typically on nights when the weather is predicted to be 33 degrees or lower. If you know anyone that needs a warming center, the best resource to find them and to learn when they are open is on the web at www.211info.org or by calling 211. If you're interested in volunteering to help at Clackamas County Warming Centers or would like to make a monetary donation to support the warming centers, visit www.clackamas.us/homelessness or call Clackamas County Social Services at 503-655-8640. Letting Library will be closed on Sunday, December 24th and Monday, December 25th for Christmas, Monday, January 1st for New Year's and Monday, January 15th for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. City Hall and Johnson Creek Boulevard, Johnson Creek Building will be closed on Monday, December 25th for Christmas, Monday, January 1st for New Year's and Monday, January 15th for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The next first Saturday concert at Letting Library will be held on January 6th at 2:00 PM featuring the Bill Coons Trio.
I have one more.
Okay.
So, the Johnson Creek Boulevard site and City Hall will also be closed on December 29th from noon to 5:00 PM, that's a Friday afternoon, and it'll again be closed January 5th in the afternoon. We are giving the staff a chance to actually clean out the building, so actually go through everything, record all their records, make sure that everything's getting into HPRM. It's a great way to start the new year with a clean desk, so we're closing down for those two afternoons.
Yeah, cool.
Good.
The solstice event was amazing. We had thousands of people there and the staff did an amazing job setting it up. They sold out of hot dogs in like the first hour.
Wow.
Less.
Really, really fast, it was crazy. They're, they're talking about getting 500 hot dogs next year. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
It was perfect weather.
It was perfect weather, it was, it was...
I just wanna, this is my perfect track record because now two years in a row, it's been beautiful at that event. And I'm gonna just go with you.
You're gonna take credit for that?
As long as you take the snowstorm that follows.
The snowstorm actually was the start of it, that's why last year was so pretty because there was snow everywhere.
Yeah, ice and snow, I remember that in my...
I'll never forget that.
Boots I had. So, one thing I had to let people know about is North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council is doing a Christmas tree recycling project. And basically, what they mean by recycling is they are collecting Christmas trees to put in the streams as fish habitat. And it's not just like, "Oh, I can go down and throw my Christmas tree in the stream." They, they actually work with the fish biologists of the state to figure out appropriate locations to group trees. But anyway, this is a project that they've been doing in other parts of the metro area and down in Wilsonville and West Lynn for a couple of years, but this is the first time I know of that they've offered it in our area. It's going to be, they're gonna be collecting trees and they do charge a $10 recycling fee on Saturday, January 6th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in front, in, in McLaughlin Plaza, which is down in Oak Grove, 16240 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard. It's a great project and I understand that they are targeting actually Spring, Spring Park and Elk Rock Island as one of the areas where they would intend to use the trees to create that, you know, we hear about it from time to time, the juvenile fish resting habitat in among the Christmas trees. So, think about putting your Christmas tree to good use for the environment this year.
I have nothing?
Nope.
I move that we adjourn.
A second. Has been moved to second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard. We are adjourned. None heard. We are adjourned.